And welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's January fifth, two thousand twenty-three open session. First, Ms. Costa, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Cozart?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
I am here.
Commissioner May? Was that a yes? Commissioner Argo?
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Hewlett?
Here.
You, Commissioner Green?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Vice Chair Dixon?
Here.
Commissioner Cash?
Present.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Uh, thank you. Um. So we do have a quorum, and I will note that Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, uh, the Urban Design and Plan Review Division Director are also in the meeting. So back to you, Vice Chair Dixon.
If there is no objection, uh, the today's meeting is being live streamed and will be available in a few days as a video of NCPC's website on NCPC's website. If there are is no objection, the agenda as a post as posted is adopted as the order of business. Uh, before we proceed, we with the rest of the agenda, in the absence of a chair, the commission must nominate and vote on who should run the January meeting, this meeting, which is the second agenda item.
Mr. Vice Chair, uh, if I may, I move that we approve you, um, Mr. Vice Chair, Arlington Dixon, to chair the meeting for today, July, excuse me, January, uh, fifth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
I will second that.
Right. So we have a motion that is, Vice Chair will run the meeting today, has been moved and seconded. Ms. Costa, can you please take a vote on my roll call with Commissioners, please?
Uh, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McMahon?
Yeah.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dixon?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Right? I I think, uh, Commissioner Dixon, uh, that was a unanimous.
All right. This is unanimous. Thank you all fellow Commissioners for electing me to run this online meeting. Okay, we will, NCPC will continue to conduct its meeting. Uh, so we, I would also like just to ask for a moment of silence, a few moments of silence, to hope for a year of orderly direction, good orderly direction, and a relief to many, many people on the globe who are suffering for one reason or another uh, for this year, and hopefully this will pass.
I think we'll we'll just move into how we'll conduct the meetings.
Okay, NCPC will conduct, will continue to conduct its meeting online with renovations on the commission's chamber are completed. Uh, they they those renovations look very good. I've been down here. It's good. I want to share with, uh, we'll be conducting commission business. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each Commissioner if they have any comments. At other times, when Commissioners wish to be recognized, they should ask to be recognized. Uh, the agenda, uh, items, there are three agenda items. Uh, the the record of the Vice Chair, Beth Smith, Beth Beth White, uh, is in the meeting as a panelist, and we'd like to express a good afternoon, and there are a number of active, uh, affected commissions that I would cover in my remarks. Okay. First, I note that Mayor Bowser has reappointed Commissioners Linda Argo and me to another term on the commission. It is continual honor to serve here, and I thank the mayor and the congratulations uh, to Commissioner Argo. We are all forward to continue to work, looking forward to continuing working with here with the commission. I note that the Commission, Commissioner Cozart, was recently confirmed as Director of the Office of Planning. She has also been appointed to serve as the mayor's representative on the commission. Congratulations to Director Cozart. Our online, our longtime colleague Beth White, term was completed on January the second.
Hey, John!
I'd 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 like to thank her and recognize her many years of service as Commissioner and Chair. I'll turn to Secretary Cozart to read a resolution prepared for this occasion.
Thank you. Um, uh, this is going to take just a little while since this resolution covers uh, not only a decade of service, but I think will also serve as a really great recap of the remarkable work of the commission during this time period. So this is a resolution for Elizabeth A. Beth White. Whereas Elizabeth A. Beth White was appointed to the National Capital Planning Commission by President Barack Obama on January fourth, two thousand twelve, as an at-large representative, reappointed by President Obama on November twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, and served on the commission through January second, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas she was selected by her fellow commissioners to chair meetings from January to November, two thousand twenty-one, and was then designated by President Joe Biden as Chair on November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, led NCPC's Executive Committee, and honorably served in these capacities throughout her time on the commission. Whereas Chair White demonstrated leadership, encouraged creativity and collaboration, maintained a commitment to excellence, and fostered effective participation by Commissioners, applicants, and the public. Whereas Chair White brought to the commission's review of commemorative works, museums, and cultural destinations, a strong understanding of national purpose and personal experience, and championed both equitable representation and protection of symbolic spaces, including the Arlington National Cemetery Expansion, the Eisenhower Memorial, the National Native American Veterans Memorial, the National World War One Memorial, the South Mall Campus Master Plan, the National Air and Space Museum Revitalization, the Hirshhorn Museum Sculpture Garden Rehabilitation, and the Reach of the Kennedy Center. Whereas Chair White helped NCPC explore opportunities for the next generation of memorials and museums through the Memorials Trends and Practices Report, the Memorials for the Future Ideas Competition, and the Game-Changing Beyond Granted Initiative, as well as NCPC's ongoing engagement with the Smithsonian's Museum Site Selection Study. Whereas Chair White encouraged thoughtful advancement of the capital city's built environment through a complete update of the Comprehensive Plans Federal Elements, including the new urban design element, extensive work for the Height Master Plan for Washington DC, and the visionary work of the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. Whereas she strengthened partnerships with military installations in support of master plans and projects that achieved mission goals and sustainability, security, and heritage objectives, uh, and promoted continual improvements in multimodal transportation and connections with communities at the Pentagon, Quantico, Joint Base Andrews, Joint Base Anacostia-Boling, and the Intelligence Community Campus in Bethesda. Whereas Chair White encouraged master plan applicants to achieve high standards of design and environmental stewardship, promoting better outcomes as campuses sought to grow and consolidate, including the Food and Drug Administration campuses at White Oak and Mirakirk, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, the New Foreign Mission Center, the Federal Reserve Board, Goddard Space Flight Center, and the Department of Homeland Security Headquarters at St. Elizabeth's. Whereas she understood and championed the critical task of balancing security and public access in projects that included the White House, the National Zoo, the State Department and Commerce Department Headquarters, the National Arboretum, and the Washington Monument, and encouraged NCPC to be a thought leader in bringing together diverse interests to present ideas, sponsor events, and explore best practices in public space security. Where she recognized and furthered the importance of aligning federal and local interests to create and maintain great communities, effective transportation systems, and inspiring civic spaces through the Monumental Core Streetscape Guidelines and the commission's review of the Arlington and Frederick Douglass Memorial Bridges, Franklin Park, and the Carnegie and Martin Luther King Junior Memorial Library Revitalizations. Whereas she advocated for more and more inclusive parks and public spaces through our updated Parks and Open Space Element, the Small Parks Study, and in our reviews that included the Eleventh Street Bridge Park, Banneker Overlook, Georgetown Canal Plan, and the Rock Creek Trail Improvements. Whereas Chair White brought thoughtful guidance, encouragement, and support to NCPC staff in the development of new submission guidelines, parking and tree replacement standards, a new website, and in incorporating equity and sustainability practices into commission activities. Whereas she generously and graciously contributed her time and talents to NCPC's work, was an insightful and respected colleague, an enthusiastic participant in all commission activities, and forged stronger relationships with other federal agencies. Therefore, be it resolved that on January fifth, two thousand twenty-three, the National Capital Planning Commission members and staff recognized Beth White for more than eleven years of dedicated public service as a Commissioner and as the Chair. Further, the commission and staff expressed their great appreciation for her service and wish her much happiness and success in her future endeavors. She will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for comments from other Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman? Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Um, I I would just like to, um, I won't say necessarily on behalf of my Commissioners because they didn't ask me to say this, but it's it's for everybody. And but this is this is directed at Beth. It's been an honor and a privilege to work on alongside of you, both physically and virtually. These past thirty years, your leadership has been invaluable as you have guided us through the pandemic and a transition to an often challenging virtual platform. I so admire your strength and grace as a leader and appreciate and value your friendship.
Thank you.
So can I go next?
Yes, please, Peter.
I never get to go after Commissioner Argo. I just want to say I completely agree completely with Commissioner Argo. And I have very little add. I will very quickly just say, you know, I it's hard for me to believe that it's been eleven years, but wow, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's been an amazing eleven years, quite a tenure. Um, and I will say that, you know, we we saw eye to eye on so many things. We have this common background and love for parks. Uh, didn't necessarily agree on everything, but, you know, most of the time, and it was always collegial, and, you know, Beth has always been one who uh, fought hard, uh, even before she was Chair to to bring us all to consensus, and that's such a valuable thing. Uh, and in the, uh, I'll say in the in the executive committee meeting that we had, uh, last week, it was mentioned by one of the staff that, uh, Commissioner and and then Chairman White was, uh, one of the nicest Commissioners they'd ever worked for and served with, and I underscored that by saying, well, I think she pretty much is the nicest. Uh, and I think that's true, and that's not to say, you know, some of you guys aren't nice. I'm not the nicest, I know that. Anyway, that was, and it really has been a pleasure to serve with you, so I really appreciate it, and we'll miss you terribly.
Thank you, Peter.
Ditto.
The other Commissioners who'd like to comment? If not?
I would. Okay. I would. Um, Beth, this is your namesake, Elizabeth Hewlett, and, you know, I just joined a, um, charitable board, um, a nonprofit, and as soon as I joined, the person who enthusiastically recruited me announced his, my very first meeting announced he was leaving. And so, you know, I just joined NCPC. Meeting with you where you greeted me, and I came down there in person, and you greeted me so beautifully and in such a welcoming fashion. And then I find out you're leaving, and I'm like starting to take this quite personally. Everybody's leaving the second I join something, but I did want to echo what everyone else said. I mean, you were so welcoming, and then in reading back once in meeting through materials and seeing what has been done in years past, and these are additional amendments and whatnot, I can see all that you've done, or at least a glimpse of what you've done, and then um, and hearing the resolution, I'm just so thankful that we overlapped for such a short period of time, and I at least, and I look forward to great things from you in the future, and I just thank you for your service.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add as part of the the short timers, um, how welcoming, uh, you there, uh, Chair White and just bringing was very new to me. I didn't know what the experience was going to be on this commission, but your warmth and your welcoming and just kind of corralling and bringing us into alignment uh, meant the world to me, and so just wishing you all the best, and, uh, what an amazing resolution and what amazing set of accomplishments, so all the best to you.
And I'd just like to again thank, uh, Beth. It's been great working with you all this time. Sorry, I haven't gotten to see you in person in quite a while, but I've learned a lot from you, having no former planning background or anything like that. It's been a a great experience working with you on the commission over all these past years, so thanks and good luck.
Thank you.
And I would like to know what your forwarding address will be, because I believe I owe you a basket of breadsticks, among other things, for many. I didn't forget.
That'd be wonderful.
Well, I bet we can find her.
Oh, yeah. You'll be able to find me.
Okay. Okay, do we have any other Commissioners who would like to speak? If not, I'd like to also, of course, uh, join my colleagues in what they've already said, and make it clear to you, you probably you know this, that when you first came on, I I made a trip to Chicago just to see your project there, and we've been in touch and made connections in other ways, so I appreciate you very much. And of course, other than your knowledge and capacity, your warmth is probably, uh, to us in 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 dealing with our measures has been very, very special. Uh, it's good to have some warmth, uh, in the process, and that's good. Thank you very much. Um, with that, would you like to make any remarks? Turn to take, we back to you.
Uh, yeah, I'll have to take a deep breath first. I I I would like to, um, share a few remarks, and I I just so appreciate your comments, a little overwhelming, um, but, you know, it's been, it's been the highlight. Of my career to have been appointed by President Obama, um, and then, yeah, what, that designated Chairman, heaven hanging above my computer here, by President Biden, to, um, work with talented and passionate group of professionals. I mean, all of you are making such an indelible impact on the vitality and the resilience of the capital region, the built environment, but also serving as thought leaders, not just in the capital region, but for planners and builders across the nation. And, you know, I just want to tell you, I have been inspired by all of you every day and cherish the time I've spent with you to work toward a more just and equitable and inclusive capital region, and I, you know, the collaborative work that you do, when you think about NCPC, and I remember when I first learned about NCPC as a federal agency, it's quite small in number, but really mighty in terms of impact, and the affinity I have for the organization and the deep love I have for the organization comes from that, and starting, as as Peter said, with our, you know, collective, um, common background in parks, it was a Parks Commission. And you think about the power of parks and establishing a public realm and making a place livable and sort of setting the stage for what can happen in the city, but much less in the capital, which is so important to all of our colleagues around the nation. And and in particular, to serve as the at-large member was really pretty special, because I could come in and hopefully bring a fresh perspective, but I also was able to go back to at the time, Chicago, and the last six years in Houston, and really apply what I've learned from all of you and the work that I do here, and hopefully bring some lessons in terms of cities in America who are grappling with all the same issues that we're facing with climate change and um, trying to be a more equitable society. So it's, um, it it really has been a privilege and an honor, and I don't use those words lightly when I think about the work that we've done together and what you'll continue to do. The the initiatives particularly, um, I listed it. I'm so, uh, I I'm I'm so amazed at the work that's gone in in the resolution, but I think about Pennsylvania Avenue, the Eco District, the military installations, they're trying to grapple with what we do with these incredible assets that the capital region has. But beyond granted, I agree, I think is really special, and I think will be a game changer. And and again, not just in the capital region, but what we do across the country in terms of commemoration and memorialization and how we tell our nations and our communities stories. So I really wanted to speak to that. And I also want to say that, um, our work as a commission would not be possible without the incredibly talented, visionary, effective staff. Um, all of you have been so supportive to each of us as Commissioners, making sure we're prepared, um, uh, keep us out of trouble, um, on occasion, and, um, really, everything you do every day to make the capital region better, and, you know, without fail, I think about every month, the quality of the work that you bring forward to the commission, the the EDRs that are so well reasoned and thoughtful and impactful project reviews. Um, we hear time and again from applicants how much better their projects are because of our staff. And I just really wanted to thank you for that, um, your support, your collaboration, your passion for the work. Um, Julia referenced this, but as the at-large member, I always push for more and more public engagement. How do we engage the rest of the nation? And the staff has always delivered on that and continue to raise the bar, so, um, congratulations. No, I'll be cheering you on for that. And I also want, um, to thank Marcel Acosta for his brilliant and visionary leadership over the years as our Executive Director. We've been so fortunate to have Marcel at the helm. He's such a well-respected planner across the nation and very creative and often behind the scenes, but, um, has amazing impact in in what he provides to us in terms of our deliberations. And I I also want to thank my colleagues at Houston Parks Board and Trust for Public Land who embraced this role and supported me. I would not have been able to do this as wholeheartedly as I have without their support and also what they brought in terms of their feedback on some of the commission issues that that we were weighing. And I just want to say, um, you know, in closing, I have learned so much from all of you. You have made this such a rewarding, enriching, and inspiring experience, but you've also made the past eleven years a lot of fun, and especially these last few years, when we've all needed a little joy in our lives, um, you guys have been amazing. Okay, so with that, tears are coming, so I'm going to sign off. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Beth. Thank you. We'll miss you, miss you very much. Thank you.
I'll be cheering you on.
Good. Okay, we will move to the agenda item four, which is the report of our Executive Director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and first, congratulations to you, Vice Chair Dixon and Commissioner Argo and Cozart, uh, for your reappointment to the commission. Just one more testimonial on behalf of the NCPC staff. Would like to take this opportunity to thank Chair White for her many contributions during her eleven-year tenure with the commission. We greatly appreciate the guidance, wisdom, and support you provided to the staff. Over the years, you've generously shared your time and expertise with our entire team. Your insightful observations and strong leadership have benefited many projects and planning additions coming before this commission. And you've loved this, and you led this commission through beautiful deliberations about some of our region's most important planning issues with tremendous grace and dignity. I know I speak for my NCPC colleagues to say it has been a privilege working with you. We wish you all the best and much success in your future endeavors. Finally, we also bid farewell to urban planner Carlton Hart. Carlton has been with NCPC for sixteen years. He's presented to the commission many high-profile projects, including the Kennedy Center Expansion, the Department of Homeland Security Headquarters, Master Plans for the Pentagon, and Arlington Cemetery. We congratulate Carlton on his new role as Senior Urban Planner at the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts. Very well deserved. And with that, I'd like to conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Oh, uh, Chair Dixon, I believe you're on mute.
I thought I clicked it, but at any rate, thank you, Mr. Costa, for this, and any Commissioners have any comments to, um, Mr. Costa? If not, we'll move to our legislative update, uh, from Mrs. Skyler.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and to you and the Met Commission Members, Happy New Year. And to former Chair White, we we spoke yesterday, and I think you know how I feel, and I think there have been some beautiful things said today, which I couldn't possibly help. I couldn't compete, so we'll leave it at that. Um, Mr. Chairman, to the matter at hand, I do have a legislative report. There were four bills incorporated into the Consolidated Appropriations Act of two thousand twenty-three relative to commemorative works, and they all became law on December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. A brief summary of each follows. First, a bill authorizing the establishment of a commemorative work in the district and its environs to commemorate the commitment and service of women who worked on the home front during World War Two. The law requires that the establishment of the commemorative work shall be in conformance with the Commemorative Works Act. Second, a bill authorizing the extension of the authority for establishing a National Liberty Memorial Commemorative Work. The law extends the authority through September third, two thousand twenty-seven. The National Liberty Memorial, for those of you who are new, is a proposed national memorial to honor the more than five thousand enslaved and free persons of African descent who served as soldiers or sailors or provided civilian assistance during the American Revolutionary War. Third, a bill authorizing the establishment of a commemorative work on federal land and the district and its environs to commemorate the heroic deeds and sacrifices of service animals and their handlers in and their handlers. The law requires that this work shall be in accordance with the Commemorative Works Act. Fourth and last, a bill establishing, a bill authorizing the establishment of a commemorative work on federal land and the district and its environs to honor the extraordinary, excuse me, the extraordinary contributions of Jean Monet. Yeah, he he was charged with, he's, I'm sorry, he he isn't, he, the commemoration to him is respect to his restoring peace between European nations and establishing the European Union. Again, the the law requires that this commemorative work shall be in conformance with the Commemorative Works Act. This completes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Skyler. Any comments from the Commissions or questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh,
Yes.
I I wanted to add a couple of things. Um, the Skyler that that also passed uh, in the omnibus bill, uh, I'm not sure exactly what their origin was. I don't I don't have a full recap here, um, but there was an authorization for Area One for the Fallen Journalists Journalists Memorial. So that was approved by the Congress as well. So that was approved by the Congress as well. And then two other new memorials were authorized. The enslaved individuals who endured Middle Passage and the Thomas Paine Memorial. So those were ones that, that we picked up from the bill in our recap. So it was a big year for.
It was. Total of seven, then. A total of seven. Thank you, Peter, for, thank you, Commissioner, for adding that information, which I guess I missed.
Yeah.
It was a large bill.
It is a large bill, yes. I should have gotten to this, this to you in advance, but anyway.
That's okay. Thank you very much for contributing.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you both for that. Any additional comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move to agenda item six, the consent calendar. And I'd like to ask the Secretary, Madam Secretary, to give us those items and be solicit any additional comments from staff that are needed.
The first item on the consent calendar is for final approval of the Joint Base Anacostia-Boling Housing and Community Support District Plan in Washington, DC. This project was submitted by the Department of the Air Force. The second item is approval of comments to the Council of the District of Columbia regarding the partial closing of First, Water and V Streets. As requested by the District of Columbia Office of the Surveyor.
Okay. Having heard those, is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So moved.
All right. It's been moved, so let us now ask the Secretary to please call the roll, please.
Sure. What I pulled from that was the motion was made by Commissioner May and seconded theastically by Commissioner Hewlett. Is that correct? Thank you. Commissioners Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Epstein.
Thank you. The motion has carried.
All right, very well. And thank you all very much. We'll move now to agenda item number 7A. It's, it's for the approval and comments consent planning for Title Basin and the West Potomac Park Seawall Rehabilitation. I'll ask Mr. Lee Webb to make the presentation, please.
Great. Ms. Costa, can you confirm that you can see my presentation and hear my voice?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Well, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the commission. The National Park Service has submitted concept plans for the repair and rehabilitation of approximately 6,800 linear feet of the failing seawall along portions of the Title Basin and West Potomac Park in Washington, DC. The project goals include returning the seawalls to their historic functional height, improve visitor accessibility and experience over the next decade, and plan for sea level rise in the future. The Park Service only has funding for rehabilitation and repair at this time and is therefore taking a phased approach of first stabilizing sections of the wall and restoring the historic functional height, allowing more time to consider additional measures in the future. MPS will be working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and other stakeholders on future planning efforts to consider broader climate change impacts and solutions for West and East Potomac Parks, as well as a comprehensive plan for the Title Basin. The seawall area along the Potomac River and Title Basin were created as part of a land reclamation project beginning in the mid-19th century. West Potomac Park is a U.S. National Park in Washington, DC, adjacent to the National Mall. It includes the parkland that extends south of the Lincoln Memorial Reflecting Pool and from the Lincoln Memorial to the grounds of the Washington Monument. The park is the site of many national landmarks, including the Korean War Veterans Memorial, the Thomas Jefferson Memorial, the Franklin Delano Roosevelt Memorial, and the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial. West Potomac Park, as well as East Potomac Park and the area encompassing the Title Basin, were listed in the National Register of Historic Places in 1973. The seawalls are considered contributing features to the National Register Historic Districts. As this is a concept review, the focus of today's presentation is to receive commission comments and feedback prior to preparing, to the preparation of a more detailed preliminary submission by the applicant. In this case, the focus of the review is understanding the appropriateness of the project for the site and context, understanding any particular unique or complex issues that need to be addressed, and identifying any stakeholders that may need to be further involved. Now I will share some images of the existing conditions resulting from the issues with the seawalls, as well as provide an orientation to the project area. As these existing photographs show, over the years, the seawalls have significantly settled, leading to water overtopping the seawalls as well as poor drainage. This has led to reduced public access and damage to the cultural landscape and park infrastructure, resulting in negative impacts to visitor use and experience. This slide shows the extent of the current project area, which is outlined in yellow. This project will address immediate issues of the failing seawall in locations demonstrating the highest degree of settlement and erosion. The applicant has indicated the project will not address longer-term rises in sea level at this time, but will lay the structural foundation for additional wall increases in the future as needed. As I mentioned previously, MPS will be working on future comprehensive planning efforts to consider broader climate change impacts and solutions for the Title Basin and West and Potomac Park, West and East Potomac Parks. Thus, stuffifies that the future measures to address rising sea levels could have more significant impacts on the landscape and will need to consider historic preservation, visitor experience, sustainability, and program needs. The project area is divided into four distinct sections, and I'll begin with Title Basin East that extends from the inlet bridge to the Jefferson Memorial steps. You can see this area circled in yellow on the left image of the slide. Its current configuration dates to the early 1940s as a portion of the Title Basin itself was adjusted to make room for the construction of the Jefferson Memorial. The seawall features a concrete wall with historic stones along its outward face. The walls closest to the inlet bridge date back to approximately 1909, when the inlet bridge was built. Land settlement in this area has caused daily flooding with water unable to naturally drain, becoming trapped on the land, leading to vegetation die-off and damage to tree health. The next area is Title Basin West, which extends from the inlet bridge to the pathway to the Franklin Delano Roosevelt Memorial, next to the Japanese Pagoda. This section of wall was first built in the late 1800s. The Title Basin West was reconstructed, well, was reconstructed between 1907 and 1909, when the inlet bridge was constructed by the Corps of Engineers. In 1941, an eight-inch thick concrete coping was added to the top to heighten the wall to account for settlement. Today, the walls show evidence of settlement behind the walkway, resulting in water ponding and vegetation damage along the inside edge of the walkway. The next area is West Potomac Park South, which extends from the inlet bridge to approximately the intersection of West Basin Drive and Ohio Drive. The West Potomac Park South seawall is the oldest in the project area. The foundation was completed in 1884 and the top of the seawall completed in 1891. However, riprap and other fill by concrete and asphalt have been periodically added to stabilize the wall or shoreline through the 1990s. The last project area is West Potomac Park North, which extends from the intersection of West Basin Drive and Ohio Drive to Memorial Bridge. This is the newest section of the seawall, which dates to 1957. Pepco rebuilt this section of the wall with a concrete cap. Excavation of the soil behind the wall in this area indicates it is a cast-in-place concrete wall with a stone veneer. It is unknown if any of the original seawall stones remain. The concept plans approach will allow for additional height to be added to the seawalls in the future as sea level rise increases. This project will increase the percentage of total park area that is open and safely acceptable for public visitation by reducing instances of flooding, overtopping and pooling of water. In addition, a significant amount of deferred maintenance backlog will be addressed by this project. After careful consideration to address the immediate issues with the stabilization of the seawalls in the project area, MPS determined that the design should incorporate a pile-supported foundation extending to the bedrock to avoid future settlement. This solution also allows the wall heights to be raised in the future if needed. However, additional comprehensive study will be necessary to consider whether this or other approaches will appropriately address future sea level rise. As this is a rehabilitation project, the goal is to reestablish the seawall's historic functional height and reconstruct it along the historic alignment. When first constructed and then adhered to in subsequent modifications and extensions, the seawall was built to an elevation of six feet above mean low water. Settlement combined with rising sea levels have resulted in the wall residing much closer to the wall's surface. And when we say historic functional height, we're talking about the relationship between the water level, the height of the seawall, and the landscaping adjacent to the wall on the land side. To correct this, the selected top of wall elevation is based on a height of six feet above current mean low water. The proposed height will help keep adjacent areas from flooding during normal tidal events, as well as minor flood stage events. This results in an elevation increase of 4.75 feet within the Title Basin. The top of the wall elevation along the West Potomac Park seawall will be increased by 5.5 feet. This is to account for the additional impact and overtopping of larger waves which do not impact the walls inside of the Title Basin. The proposed design includes foundations that bear on bedrock, relieving the weight of the structure on the soils that has caused previous settlement. This type of foundation allows future capacity for the walls to be raised vertically in response to future sea level rise and increasing storm surge elevations. Two of the main requirements of this project are to prevent future settlement of the seawall and maintain the historic character. The proposed pile-supported foundation details reflect what MPS believes to provide the ease of construction and reduce cost while preventing future settlement. As such, staff supports the applicant's approach for the seawall project by removing the existing stone masonry seawall and reconstructing the wall along the historic alignment into the original historic functional height. To the extent possible, the stones of the historic walls will be salvaged and reused in the rehabilitation. The proposed face of the wall maximizes the reuse of historic stone, maintains the historic ashlar stone look, and has the ability to be built upon to combat future projected higher water levels if needed. The applicant has evaluated different options for the appearance of the reconstructed seawalls and the look of the stone in consultation with consulting parties and the review agency. The preferred approach includes maximizing reuse of historic stones, utilizes even coursing and stone size with rough and smooth faces, and a uniform stone color with medium gaps. Historic stone will be a minimum of nine inches in depth, allowing extent stones to be cut to maximize their use. This approach was deemed appropriate because it replicates the historic appearance and arrangement of the oldest components of the seawalls, while allowing for the possible reuse of the greatest number of existing stones. In regards to other components of the landscape adjacent to the seawalls, walkways will be repaired or replaced to reestablish the character of the park and the visitor's experience. Pathways will be widened to 12 feet to accommodate park visitors. The seawall rehabilitation project will also correct deficiencies in the upland areas behind the walls. Grading will be adjusted to accommodate the elevated seawall height and to reestablish sheet flow runoff. This will eliminate any existing areas of settlement. The additional elevation and regrading will eliminate the daily inundation of the tides, reduce the impact of and provide positive drainage of more extreme storms, allowing for the cultural landscape of the park to be restored. As such, staff supports the applicant's intent to repair or replace the walkways to reestablish the character of the park and improve the visitor's experience and safety. In respect to trees and vegetation, approximately 300 existing trees will be removed and will be replaced with approximately 381 new trees, following NCPC's tree replacement policy. MPS will replace all removed trees, including all the Japanese cherry trees. Their location and species will be informed by the Cultural Landscape Report for the Title Basin, as well as the work of a historic landscape architect and MPS's arborist. Where possible, stormwater management will be maintained by a natural gravity runoff over a 2% slope on vegetated terrain. Clogged stormwater drains within Title Basin East will be cleaned and made operational within the scope of work. Therefore, staff supports the applicant's intent to plant more resilient vegetation in identified areas informed by the Title Basin Cultural Landscape Report. Staff does request that the applicant provide further information about the proposed tree removal and replacement, including estimated quantities and proposed species as part of the next review. To conclude, staff commends the MPS for engaging partner federal agencies and the Section 106 consulting parties through the development of the design for the seawall's rehabilitation project. Staff recommends that the commission support the MPS's project goals to rehabilitate the Title Basin and West Potomac Park seawalls, to return the seawalls to their historic functioning height, improve visitor accessibility and experience, and plan for future sea level rise. I note that the Section 106 process is continuing, continuing with an expected memorandum of agreement to be executed to address agreed-upon mitigation measures commensurate with adverse effects caused by the project. Also, MPS is preparing an environmental assessment for NEPA, which will be released prior to submission for preliminary review in 2023. We look forward to working with MPS, the Corps of Engineers, and other stakeholders as MPS commences future planning efforts to consider broader climate change impacts and solutions for West and East Potomac Parks, as well as their work on a comprehensive plan for the Title Basin. This concludes my presentation. As I've covered the recommendations in my presentation, I will not repeat them here. At this time, I would like to introduce Jeff Reembold, the Superintendent of the National Mall and Memorial Parks, would like to say a few words. Also, Tammy Stidham with the National Park Service and Margaret Bochek, the project engineer, are here to help answer any question the commission may have. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Lee. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. A special thank you to the commission staff and to Mr. Webb for the presentation. As a quick aside from an MPS field, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Marcel and the NCPC staff, and many projects we work on daily, especially things like Beyond Granite and Pennsylvania Avenue that really have the potential to be transformative for the, for the city and for our parks. As you can tell, this is an ambitious project, as you saw in the presentation or if you've witnessed firsthand, at the Title Basin or West Potomac Park, the work is desperately needed. Nationally, the National Park Service made rehabilitating the seawalls one of its top priorities for federal funding through the Great American Outdoors Act, which is intended to address deferred maintenance. It's a highly competitive funding process, and we were fortunate to receive upwards of $100 million in funding as one of the largest National Park Service projects across the nation. We need to move this project and this process efficiently to capitalize on this once-in-a-lifetime funding opportunity, but we couldn't do that without the work of a variety of agency partners. of a variety of agency partners. And while we're still at the concept stage, many of them have already been invaluable, and I do want to just acknowledge them. The D.C. Department of Environment and Energy, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, D.C. Water, Virginia Passenger Rail Authority is working on the Long Bridge Project, Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, D.C. State Historic Preservation Office, Commission of Fine Arts, the NCPC staff, and also the National Marine Fisheries Service and the Fish and Wildlife Service. And as Lee mentioned, we also have a robust group of consulting parties and stakeholders in the 106 process as well as great and varied public interest in this. So I will also mention that we're eager through this project to demonstrate the impact and benefit, public benefit of this work so that it may be a catalyst for future federal investment to address the miles of seawalls that the NPS maintains along both Potomac and Anacostia rivers. That future work is exciting as we may be able to explore a variety of treatments that could be more effective and more appropriate in those locations. So looking forward, again, we'll release the environmental assessment and go to CFA in February or March, come back to you for preliminary review. And while the project today is about rehabilitating a small area of the tidal basin, we are eager to launch the master plan that Lee mentioned. This builds on some of the recent initiatives by the in the Ideas Lab by the Trust for the National Mall and National Trust for Historic Preservation to take a more comprehensive look at the tidal basin. So we appreciate your consideration today on this really important project for the park. Thank you.
Okay, this time we'd like to thank Mr. Webb and Superintendent Rehmbold for his work and their work on this project. The commissioners, do they have any questions at this time?
I I do. So I think you just answered it, Jeff, but my question was going to be about, I'm assuming that money wasn't the only reason that you're not going for more comprehensive solutions. But but can you say a little bit more about that? I mean, what? And and you also answered my other question about the Idea Lab and how it was going to it played into this project. But can you say a little bit more about the process? How how you're going to use this, not as a prototype, but certainly as what you're going to do with what you learn through the process of implementing this project?
Sure. And and I may, thanks for that question. And I may ask Tammy to weigh in on some of the technical sides. I will say more strategically, the the deferred maintenance backlog in the National Park Service is significant, and the fight for this funding was was very competitive. And so we felt that we could have the biggest impact in the tidal basin on West Potomac Park because those areas, people did not have use for them for long periods of time, right? And the the resource damage from them was significant as they flooded twice daily. Our hope is, though, we're looking at several hundred million dollars to just do the rest of East Potomac Park, not even to mention the other parks that the or the other seawalls that the Park Service maintains. So I'm hoping that through this, we'll demonstrate the public benefit, the return on that investment as well as learn a lot technically that will help inform the steps that we take south of here and then actually make the, you know, make those those investments more efficient in in how we tackle places like East Potomac Park. I mentioned it quickly, but outside of the tidal basin and West Potomac Park, you know, we do also look forward to the opportunity to explore other treatments beyond just rebuilding a seawall if they're natural shorelines along the Anacostia or along the Potomac that make more sense, eager to explore those as well. So I don't know, Tammy or Margaret, if you want to add anything technically on what we'll learn from this that we can use to inform the future sections.
I think that we learned a lot about the soils of this area and how best to engineer a new foundation for the wall that will give it a longer lifespan.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry. I'm Tammy Stidham. I'm the Deputy Associate Regional Director for Lands and Planning of the National Park Service.
Thank you.
These these soils were all filled as this was created parkland, and the walls were meant to hold it in place. So the engineering that we learned will place it on bedrock instead of on rubble. And I think in places where we look at East Potomac Park and even Anacostia Park where it has a similar construction, as we look towards those future projects, I think that the engineering that we developed here can be applied in those areas, in areas where putting the seawall back makes the most sense.
Very good.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question. Sorry.
No, go right ahead, please.
I I think you're 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 going to see where I'm going with this. Are there plans while while construction is underway to have some interpretive kind of educational, what's going on, explanatory stuff so that people can learn about what's happening? The reason I'm asking, of course, is because as feds, we're going to have to invest billions of dollars, and the public is going to have to get behind this. So it's I'm hoping that the answer to this question is yes, so that that people can be educated and informed and understand what's happening and the implications, including, you know, what you're learning as you go that's applicable to future projects.
I I'm smiling because somewhere our staff is shuddering because that is really important to me when we undertake these major projects is there's a great opportunity, not only to meet a public interest, but to educate and to build support for projects like this to help people understand the benefits and the needs. So most definitely.
Okay, well, I can testify that you did not send me a check to ask that question. And in fact, I don't, I can't remember if we we've met in person, so I'll vouch for you. I think it's really important to take every opportunity we can because these bills are going to come due and people are going to be upset. So the more they know, the better. Thank you.
It's very good. Thank everyone for the presentation and comments, as always, Commissioner Wright.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I had a question about the wall height. If you could speak to the process for determining that wall height, and also if you could speak to the to the engineering that will allow that wall height to be increased in the future and what that impact might look like.
I'll jump in here. I am Margaret Bochek. I'm a coastal engineer with Moffett Nickel on the JV team. So we were asked to reestablish a historic functional height, and this was the relationship between the top of the wall to the water levels. Now, we know that sea level change has occurred since their conception in the late eighteen hundreds to now. So we looked at today's mean low water level and added six feet on top of it, and we came to an elevation of plus four point seven five. We then provided a risk analysis to understand how often the that water, I'm sorry, that wall height may be overtopped and what type of of long-term effects that would have. From that, we established the four point seven five was appropriate for inside the tidal basin as it did not have effects on the icons themselves and existing infrastructure. We were able to maintain the positive drainage down to the water using those elevations and and grading them back. And on the Potomac River, as Jeff mentioned, because of the added high currents, ice, and wave overtopping, we were able to go a bit higher to the five point seven five to prevent the erosion of the backside of the wall, which is what led to its demise initially. So that's how we came to the four point seven five, and then we validated it through that risk analysis.
And and could you explain the 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 intent to build in sufficient engineering to allow the wall height to be increased in the future?
Yes, sorry, I missed that part. So we are looking at, this is alluvial soils, it's very soft soils, and originally the wall was built on a foundation of a riprap. Now that has sunken into those soft soils over time. And if we we found historic geotechnical analyses that suggested that if you place anything any greater height, the additional weight would initiate additional settlement. So we, instead of chasing our tails, we looked at options that sent piles all the way down to bedrock, which is variable throughout the site, and then a relieving platform on top. We Jeff showed a cross-section of that within the presentation. That is now holding the wall. That's taking the weight of the wall, and so the weight is no longer on the soils, but it is on that relieving platform. And it is built with the ability to add additional height on top without causing any type of settlement as it's founded directly on that bedrock.
Okay, so then the heights would go directly on top of the relieving slab and then continue on?
Correct.
Okay.
The additional height would be added up.
Okay, thank you so much.
I had a quick question. So I know in the report and I think in the presentation it was mentioned that there's going to be these future studies about future sea level rise. What's the status of those? What's the timeframe? Have those studies been funded? Is it going to be going on concurrently with construction? So guess a little bit more detail on on how realistic and how how real those those future studies are and when we can expect them.
Amy, you might be best, Tammy or Peter might be best to address those.
Yeah. So the 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 some of the information about predictions of sea level rise is already available, and that was factored in in the risk analysis in determining that, you know, trying to find what heights we would build to right now and what our tolerance is for occasional flooding with the frequency of that is. So some of that information is already known. I think the 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 future studies that we're really looking forward to how take what we learn here and address the other segments of the wall, in particular the tidal basin. The rest of the tidal, and then that's a study that we actually getting underway later this spring. So but that's more of a planning study. It's not not leading immediately to any from the way this work is.
Okay, thanks for that.
Should add to that?
No, no, that was correct.
I also want to indicate that we have two persons to testify who signed up to speak. And I want to go to the them at this time if we can. First, we have Mary Dolan. Is Dolan, are you with us?
I I'm I'm right here. Yes.
Good.
Okay. Okay. All right. Oh, okay. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. I am Mary Dolan. I'm co-founder and executive director of the FDR Memorial Legacy Committee. We are the citizen-led organization supporting the FDR Memorial with the mission to promote education about the memorial, to improve inclusion and accessibility so all visitors can experience the memorial and to preserve the memorial for future generations. Our organization is born out of the successful disability-led campaign in the nineteen nineties for disability representation at the memorial. We are a five oh one C three organization led by a board of seven and an advisory board that includes three grandchildren of FDR and Eleanor Roosevelt and former Senator, U.S. Senator Tom Harkin. It's a pleasure to speak to you all today. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through all of the different events that we've held at the FDR Memorial since two thousand and nineteen. So I ask you to, you know, review my testimony, but we hold multiple wreath layings and events at the memorial and in summer of this this year, we'll be bringing seventy-two teachers to the FDR Memorial and the Greater Tidal Basin area for professional development. So we are significant users of that space and and use it programmatically. In addition to our ongoing active agenda, our interest in involvement in issues related to the tidal basin has been well-known. Accessibility concerns about the mud and water at the FDR Memorial walkway were identified in our accessibility audit of two thousand and twenty-one, and we responded to the public comment period for the tidal basin Ideas Lab. We participated also in a tour of the tidal basin with representatives from the National Trust for Historic Preservation and Trust for the National Mall in summer two thousand and twenty-one. Because we take our role as a consulting party seriously, I've hired a few consultants to help advise me and our board and advisory board to help advocate for the protection and preservation of the memorial. However, our role is larger than just the FDR Memorial. Our role is also to ensure access and inclusion for disabled people at the tidal basin now and into the future. We believe that NCPC can assist us in that dual role of protection and access as it relates to this project in the following ways. Number one, support our request for access to reports, calculations, numerical modeling results that will assure us that this project won't exacerbate flooding at the FDR Memorial. The current modeling does not include the influence of sea level rise, winds, rainwater, subsurface water calculations. The environmental assessment is yet to be completed, and while we have specifically requested the geotechnical report, we're advised that that will be released only when the environmental assessment is issued. The comments that the FDR Committee would submit in response to this Section 106 draft memorandum of agreement would be better informed and more useful if we could have access to those reports. And as it stands today, we can't do that as we would like to by January sixth, which is the MOA comment deadline. We ask for your support to help release the Geotech Report and any of the information that's available for the from the environmental assessment so that and or and request as a signatory agency the extension of the January sixth deadline so that reports can be reviewed. Number two, how will storm water management be handled given that this project does not include storm water management? We all know that extreme rain events are becoming more voluminous and frequent, and when combined with a storm surge, these rain events may produce compound flooding that may become more acute with the presence of a wall. This is not included in the present assessments. There is also the risk of floodwaters not flushing downstream and remaining in and around the memorial causing damage. The FDR Committee recommends that NCPC support inclusion of a stormwater system assessment as a stipulation in 106 MOA. Point three, the tidal basin has two bridges, which are the responsibility of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. In the NPS Cultural Landscape Report of two thousand and twenty, it cited that the curtain gates of those bridges were not working. This federal agency partner is not yet seemingly included in Section 106. We understand that if the curtain gates were restored to their functioning capacity, the current flooding would be reduced if not mitigated. This, of course, does not address the deterioration of the seawall, but it stands to reason that the rehabilitation concept under review could be different if the curtain gates were restored. The floodgates could also help prevent the expected overtopping of the present seawalls around the memorial.
That's five minutes.
Clearly, coordination with the Army Corps would be important. In our MOA, we're requesting that the that there be the CLRs for the FDR Memorial and the MLK as called for in the tidal basin CLR of two thousand and twenty. We think that that's important for the tidal basin comprehensive plan, and we ask for continued centering of accessibility and inclusion for disabled people in the comprehensive plan and all stages of planning. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I I think we may want to get some response to your comments from the presenters. Is that possible, please?
I'm available if that's a question, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, since the next speaker is part of the same team, it's probably worth getting her testimony first so we can handle all the questions at once.
Thank you, Pete. I'll do that. Thank you for that advice. Okay, let's move then to the next presenter. This is Angela Chadel, I think, and we have three minutes for you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As previously mentioned, I'm representing the FDR Committee. I've been engaged as an engineering consultant, and I'm here to amplify Ms. Dolan's remarks. And before becoming a consultant, I was an officer in the U.S. Navy for twenty-three years, teaching engineering at the U.S. Naval Academy, and I earned my PhD at the University of Maryland. I'm intimately familiar with the tidal basin, and I've experienced its flooding firsthand during the fourteen years that I lived and served in the Greater D.C. area. And as a coastal engineer with a subspecialty in historic preservation, I have several comments related to the executive director's recommendation report and also to what Mr. Webb just presented. And in the report, you say that the project would not increase floodplain elevations, and as Ms. Dolan just mentioned, we've had previous exchanges with the National Park Service, and we've learned that their design consultants have used a hydrodynamic model to evaluate the flooding, and then it would, we understand that it's not accounting for stormwater runoff, and we have concern that the compound flooding that was previously mentioned in the testimony by Ms. Dolan, compound flooding to include rainfall, storm surge, sea level rise, and tidal could possibly be exacerbated in the vicinity of the FDR Memorial, and our team would just appreciate the opportunity to review the model results that the HDR and Moffett to review the model results that the HDR and Moffett Nickel JV team has done. We've made this request to NPS, but it's our understanding that this information is not going to be released to consulting parties until the environmental assessment is released. My next point is, once again, what Ms. Dolan said about the ground stormwater systems are not included in this project. And considering the flash flooding events that I, we all know are very frequent in the D.C. area, we would like to have assurances that the future master plan that is mentioned in the draft memorandum of agreement would include a review of stormwater system capacity. My next point is that in that EDR and Mr. Webb commanded NPS for fully engaging partner federal agencies. And as Ms. Dolan mentioned, we haven't seen any evidence of the Army Corps of Engineers participation, at least in the section one oh six consulting process that we've been a party to. And we do recognize that, you know, those tidal gates, the Baltimore District did receive some funding in fiscal year twenty-two for either repair replacement and of the engineering design of those gates. And it's possible, as previously stated, that those gates, if functioning properly, could alleviate some of the flooding in the basin. And we just believe NCPC and other consulting parties should be better informed about the potential for, for risk to the tidal basin and flood risk and the Army Corps should be involved. And then my last point is, you know, as previously mentioned, we're really concerned about the transition between that new seawall being raised several feet and the current seawall right at the FDR Memorial boundary. And we would like assurances that that handicapped accessibility won't be impacted once constructions complete. So that concludes my remarks. I do welcome any questions and thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. That completes concludes our testimony from witnesses. This will bring us back, I guess, back to the, back to the commission. Let me open it up to, to the commission in, in our round robin approach. And that is to call on the commissioners, starting with Mr. Peter, and then we'll move around to the rest of the members.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I'll also take this opportunity to try to respond to some of the points that were raised in the public testimony. And I would ask my colleagues and Ms. Bocek to supplement as needed. First of all, there, I mean, there is a lot of study that has gone into this and mentioned geotechnical studies and hydrological studies. The hydrological studies were used to determine the assessment of effect, which is part of the section one oh six process. So that's how we know the extent to which these walls may or may not exacerbate the existing flooding that occurs occasionally. And then, then, and, and again, comes up against FDR and other portions of the tidal basin that are not part of this project, right? The project stops when we get to the edge of the FDR Memorial. But, and as it turns out, that information that we have compiled so far indicates that there will not be increased flood risk as a result of this. I mean, this is when you look at that section of wall that's being raised and the amount of land that will now be protected by it. It is not really significant compared to the, the overall volume of the tidal basin, the Potomac River, Washington Channel, all of these places where water will go. And so the, you know, the information that we have right now is based on how the water flows and how the water volume is dispersed in flooding events. It's not going to impinge on the in the FDR Memorial in any appreciable way. And that's reflected in the information that has already been presented to the consulting parties. The other part of this has been mentioned is the geotech report. That, you know, that has to do with how the foundations are formed and, and we got a good description of that earlier. And that information is, you know, is still in draft form. Our consultants are required to, to produce that as part of the EA. It'll be in, in, in appendix to the EA. And so all that information will be there for all members of the public to review and, and consider at that point. As far as the involvement of the Army Corps of Engineers, I think we agree the idea that somehow the tidal gates that have not historically been used for flood control, but have been used for the management of sediment in the Washington Channel. It's, it's a good idea and we want to explore that. And it's going to take some work, I think, to get the Corps of Engineers to, to come along with that idea because their study, what they've been funded for most recently, they're not thinking that, that far yet. And we're going to have to bring them along and coax them. But that's an idea that I think many of us are very interested in. For those of you who don't understand the difference between the water control or the flood control and sediment control, the tidal basement is basically is designed, and the use of these gates is designed to allow the tidal basin to fill up at high tide and then to let the water out at low tide so that that flow of water runs through the Washington Channel and carries with it the sedimentation that can build up through normal river flows. So it's, it's, it's designed to help the, the channel is basically what it's, in addition to being a beautiful park feature. So it's, it, it does double duty. Corps of Engineers, we've been consulting with regularly. Historically, the Corps of Engineers doesn't get involved in section one oh six matters like this. Now, they have their own section one oh six process for projects that they'll undertake. And, you know, there might be some circumstances where their interests need to be addressed, but it's not normal for them to, to to enter into this kind of a discussion in the, in the one oh six context. So, but we have been consulting regularly. Maybe we're not going to be, you know, we know they have, they have the front door and the back door on this, on this body of water. We're not going to be working this without their support and assistance, right? So I think, oh, the other one was stormwater management. Yeah, I mean, this, you know, we certainly appreciate the need to address stormwater broadly across the city and, and its impacts on lands. In this circumstance, there really isn't any impact to the stormwater system, except that as part of the project, there are some catch basins that'll be cleaned out and so that the, the flow of water from our, our roads and certain areas where water to collect, you know, above and beyond this will, will, will function better. But there isn't really any impact on the stormwater system. There is potentially that impact from stormwater flowing into the river. But that's, again, you know, that's more part of the hydrological studies. And it's not really something where we have to assess the capacity, capacity of of the existing stormwater system in and around the tidal basin, because we don't really have a problem with those, that component of the system overflowing. Where there is a problem water overflowing, it's, you know, it's further into, into the city where there are issues. And, you know, we're part of the Silver Jackets team that's trying to address all of that. So we're mindful of all these things. But, you know, this is just a, a rehab of a seawall that needs to be stabilized and, and raised just a bit. So, anyway, I've done most of my stuff in explaining. Any of my colleagues want to add to that? Let's see, shaking heads, no. So they taught me well. And then other than that, I would just say we're very excited about moving this project along. We are very early in the process. As you know, this is comments on the concept and then we will be back in two months for preliminary approval. And at that point, the environmental assessment will have been released. And we will be moving forward from there. And I appreciate the staff's work on this and the report and the excellent comments we have received. So thank you very much.
I also want to mention that we did receive a, a letter from the National Mall Coalition. And those comments have been provided on our commission's website. I'm moving now to our next commissioner, Commissioner Argo. Any comments?
I think actually Commissioner McMahon.
Okay.
I'm, no, I'm sorry. I'm wrong. My apologies.
Okay. Well, I guess maybe I always wonder whether she just asks, does anybody have any comments? If not, maybe the round robin is necessary. But Ms. Argo, you are next round robin, I think.
I don't, yes, I don't have any additional comments. This is, this is, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about it as a District of Columbia and, and, and I think that the, the scientific and engineering part of this is over my head, yet fascinating to me. That would be my only comment. Thank you.
Mr. Hewlett.
Okay, Ms. Hewlett, okay. Yeah, the only comment I would have is that I, I guess I would like to commend the National Park Service, because this is really complicated. And, and as Commissioner Argo said, some of this is some of the engineering aspects and whatnot, or probably all of the engineering aspects are are beyond my capability right now. But it's, it's an incredible balancing effort to, you want to preserve those monuments that are surround the area. You want to preserve as many trees as possible, but it's not possible to preserve all of them. So, you know, you have this replanting effort. You want to actually utilizing some of the masonry of, of, of some of the same masonry will be salvaged and then reused again to the extent possible, which is amazing. You're trying to prevent as much flooding as possible, yet improving the walkways. And I would imagine that improving those walkways so that you have greater access also includes greater safety, which also for people of all ability levels. So I think that's very important. And I think that addresses some of the comments that were just raised by the two speakers, that accessibility. The, the collaboration with all the other agencies. You know, I, I just wanted to commend the park service for that. Interestingly enough, I had looked at the history of the tidal basin and at one point it was used for segregated beaches way back when. So, but anyway, I just, that was my effort to just commend the National Park Service and everyone who's been involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
Thank you very much. No, it's, it's, this is an important and necessary project. And my only, my only hope is that as the project moves forward, maybe perhaps additional thought to that, the height of that wall, which sea level is, is, it's just, it's not if, it's when and how, how much. And to build that in, that, and I understand that the, the, the thought process to, to, to allow it to be increased, but you know, perhaps the time is now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, I agree with, I was, I agree with you, Mr. Green. It's not, and, and, and that's why I'm sort of pushing on this educational opportunity. And, and I would urge the park service to be current and not be afraid to talk about money in this, in the, I mean, I, I don't want to say it's an interpretation. But whatever signage you do employ, you know, I, I hope it's more than just signage and you direct people to a website where they can learn what they need to learn and, and be very transparent. And, and the other thing that's going to invariably happen all over town is that we're going to be, we're going to have a smackdown between preservation and environmental stewardship. And, and everybody needs to kind of get used to the fact that as, as Mr. Green mentions, this wall is going to have to be big and it's going to have to change the character of the tidal basin. And we're all going to have to just kind of grapple with that. And the sooner we do, the better. So I think this is a huge opportunity for, for the public to be educated and, and, and some of the shock of what's to come is, or mitigated, starting now.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Now, Commissioner Cash.
Thanks so much. So I want to also echo some concerns about why we're not building additional height now. I know that's way above the pay grade of anyone who's sitting here as a former congressional staffer. I understand the constraints, but it just, as a taxpayer, it really bugs me that we could build it for twice the price now to what we knew we need to do. About in thirty years, we could do it for triple the price of what it's going to cost. So just a little bit frustrating. But again, I think that, that the work that's been done here and the plans look really good. I'm glad that we're at least getting it back up to a functional height and preserving the landscape and all that. But just hopeful that, that these future studies will show that, that we've got some decent protection down there. And I'm glad that we are building in the, the ability to, to build it up in the future. But sea level rise is definitely happening. I was just visiting Baltimore in our harbor for the first time this weekend and saw that a lot, a lot of the water levels are already right to the level where they built it in nineteen ninety-five already. So I'm just hopeful that this will kind of be the Band-Aid that we need for now and, and really hope that there's a renewed push in the future to, to get this to where we know we'll need to be for the next generations. But, but I think the plans look great and thanks for the work.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Davis.
Thanks. Appreciate the presentation. No additional comments from me.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. I agree with all the comments made by my fellow commissioners. It seems like an important project. It's necessary now. I agree that it is in the, the bigger picture, a short-term project, but we need to move forward with it. Thanks.
Very good. At that, we've been around the, the, the membership. I'd like to also say that I, I heard mention of some reports that were going to be needed by maybe the folks from the, Ms. Dollin mentioned. And I wonder whether they can, the timing can be such that we be supportive of them more or if it's a problem, I'm just, I raise it. I also wanted, wanted to mention that, that I'm happy to hear that they're looking to the Anacostia River. Because we have obviously the same problems and hopefully it'll get to us in time, that part of the city in time as well. But that's my only comment. And I don't know, Pete, do you want to answer that comment of timing? Thank you.
If I can also just say, I, I think this might have been my error, but I didn't know if Commissioner Cozart had anything to add.
Oh, right. No, it was your, it was, it was in my script. I didn't see it. Commissioner Cozart, let me let you weigh in now, if you will, please.
Just thanks to the staff for the presentation and the analysis and glad this project is moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Peter, you will back on, please.
Thank you. Yeah. So I, I, as I mentioned before, the report, the geotechnical report that was specifically asked for is something that's still being developed and refined and will be incorporated into the environmental assessment. That will be coming out soon. I don't know the exact, but that will, that will be there. It's not, you know, it's not going to be in sync with the comments on the memorandum of agreement under section one oh six. But it's hard to connect the, the geotechnical report with section one oh six. So, but there will be plenty of opportunity for folks to comment on this for public review. So I'm not worried about that. And of course, the commission will review it all at the, the, the next meeting. And I would also, I just want to make sure, I want to reassure my fellow commissioners that we're not doing some, you know, minimal, I think the term Band-Aid with measure that was mentioned by someone. This is a robust addition to the existing wall and it will provide protection for a long time. It's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to make this, the, the tidal basin wall here especially. It's, it's going to reinforce that. It'll be, it will be good for, you know, a couple of decades. It's, so it's not, it's not something minor and we are building it with flexibility. The reason we are not simply going higher is that there are a lot of components to this wall. I mean, you, again, think about that map that was done and how little of the tidal basin wall we are actually addressing compared to the entire extent of it. And there are many different heights along there. There are, you know, three memorials that border it. You know, there are a couple of bridges. There's a lot of complexity trying to match all those things up, not to mention the fact that we have, you know, the historic landscape of the cherry trees and including some of the original. So it's, if there's a lot that has to be balanced. And so what we're taking here is we're, we're dealing with the worst component of it. We are fixing it for a good, solid period of time and we are planning for flexibility into the future. And I, I agree with Commissioner Wright. We're going, we're looking at a future where the nature of the tidal basin may need to change. However, I will also say that if we are able to take advantage of some of the ideas that were discussed here, such as the the, the use of the inlet gates and the outlet gates to control the potential flooding, if we can work with Corps of Engineers to make use of that, we may not need to raise the, the seawall any higher within the tidal basin. That's still to be determined. So there are just too many variables to simply go out there and put in a five-foot wall when, or a ten-foot wall when a five-foot wall will do. So that's, I just want to make sure that we want to, that everybody knows we're not, we're not doing something minimal here and just playing future. We're, we're taking, I think, a pretty reasonable course and balancing it with the future needs and what needs for future study.
Thank you, Peter. I think that clarification was very useful. Thank you.
Yep.
And with that, if there's no other comments or questions, is there a motion to to move the tidal basin? To move the tidal basin and West Potomac Park uh seawall re- rehabilitation? Do we have a motion?
I move a problem, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Oops, I was muted. Sorry, second.
Uh good, alright. It's it's properly moved and seconded. Uh with that, I'd like to ask the secretary to please uh. Uh call, give us a that confirm the motion and uh and also call the roll.
Thank you. Uh the motion was made by Commissioner Hewlett and seconded by Commissioner May. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo? I'll come back to Commissioner Argo, uh Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Uh Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Uh Chair Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
I just wanted to check to see if Commissioner Argo was back on.
I am back on. Yes.
Alright, thank you. The motion has carried.
Very good. Well, I'll then thank you for the motion and having proceeded. Let us now move to our next agenda item. Uh item number seven B uh is the approval of comments and concerns plans for the Rock Creek Park Golf Course Rehabilitation. Mr. A- A- Aaron is gonna present that, right?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Aaron.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. The National Park Service has submitted a concept design for the rehabilitation of the Rock Creek Park Golf Course. Located at sixty-one hundred Sixteenth Street Northwest in Washington DC. The golf course is located in Rock Creek Park, west of Sixteenth Street and north of Military Road. As this is a concept review, the focus of today's presentation and analysis is to receive commission. Comments and feedback prior to participate, prior to preparation of a more detailed preliminary submission. In this case, the focus of the review is understanding the appropriateness of appropriateness of the site and context. Understanding any particularly unique or complex issues that need to be addressed and identifying any stakeholders that may need to be further involved. The National Park Service is responsible for three historic public golf courses in the district. NPS has signed a fifty-year agreement with the National Links Trust to rehabilitate the three courses. The Rock Creek Golf Course will be the first course to be renovated as it is in the worst condition. The Rock Creek Park Golf Course is currently listed in the National Register of Historic Places as a contributing resource to the Rock Creek Park Historic District. The site is approximately one hundred acres and includes an eighteen-hole parkland-style golf course. Preliminary primarily designed by golf course architect William S. Flynn. In nineteen twenty-one, William Flynn was hired to design a new course, and in nineteen twenty-three, President Warren G. Harding dedicated and opened the course. In nineteen twenty-four, Flynn returned to determine the new routing to increase the course to eighteen holes, which opened to the public in the spring of nineteen twenty-six. Modifications occurred in the fifties with the realignment of Military Road Northwest. A twenty-seventeen cultural landscape inventory for the course established that the course is individually eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. It is an important local work of William S. Flynn and a largely intact example of a course designed during the period referred to as. The Golden Age of Golf Course Architecture. Golf course architect William S. Flynn created a layout that highlighted the topography and incorporated stands of mature trees. An existing nineteenth-century farmhouse was originally renovated for use as a clubhouse, but was eventually replaced in nineteen sixty-four. The main entry to the course is from Sixteenth Street Northwest and winds past the maintenance building and parking area to the clubhouse. The course only has fourteen active holes, as four holes are not in service due to deteriorating conditions, as noted here in the red circle. At the southern end of the course, the location of six of the front nine holes were shifted due to the construction of Military Road, but the overall routing of the course was retained. The current course suffers from deferred maintenance that has impacted golf course facilities as well as the playability of the course. Woody vegetation encroaches on the fairways, greens, and teas. Over the years, vegetation was planted on the front nine without following the distinct golf course style. In other instances, invasive vegetation, especially vines, has covered original stands of trees, which obscures views into forested areas. The course also suffers from poor turf conditions caused by traffic patterns, poor cart paths, poor drainage, tree root com- competition. Poor irrigation system and shade from encroaching trees. The existing nineteen sixty-four clubhouse is listed as a contributing resource within the Rock Creek Park Historic District. However, after evaluation, it was determined that the building could not be reused due to its small size and lack of accessibility. The extensive use of masonry interior partitions would also make reconfiguration difficult. As such, the demolition and replacement of the clubhouse with a new facility are proposed to meet the needs of the National Links Trust, Golf Course Patrons, and the community. The proposed project includes a nine-hole regulation course and a shorter nine-hole par-three course. The intent is to expand the appeal of the facility to both experienced and beginner golfers. The nine-hole regulation course will use corridors from both Flynn's more open front nine and more wooded back nine. Taking advantage of the natural bolt-like topography, the proposed driving range stands on what is now the ninth and tenth holes. With a line of play up the hill to the north. The maintenance building will be relocated out of view of the main entry. The applicant is proposing a new clubhouse with driving range and a community pavilion with terrace seating that will offer a view of the first and ninth holes. The nine-hole par-three course will start and finish just west of the current ninth green. This course is a place for beginners to transition from the driving range to the course and for more advanced players to sharpen their skills. The mix of playing options takes advantage of the site's natural setting and minimizes tree clearing, allows for healthy turf conditions, which improves playability. The proposed project transforms the area on the northern edge of the golf course, which was historically the location of the twelfth and thirteen holes into a maintained meadow. A proposed irrigation pond occupies a natural depression in the fairway of the twelfth hole. The scale of tree removal and replacement impact is unclear. At this stage, the applicant will need to submit this information at future submissions. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing clubhouse and replace it with a new ten thousand four hundred square foot, fully accessible, two-level clubhouse. Offering a food and beverage operation, restrooms, and other amenities. The proposed clubhouse will be located near the existing clubhouse, the center of the course. The building will be oriented to enhance and emphasize the panoramic views from the clubhouse to the golf course. Cited to preserve mature trees that surround the existing clubhouse and nestled into the existing topography of the site. A two-tiered driving range structure will extend west from the main clubhouse building. The applicant also proposes a parking area with around one hundred spaces. While this is a reduction from the one hundred and twenty-five spaces today, it's unclear what is the minimum amount of parking needed. This parking information will be needed at a future submission. The applicant is also proposing permeable paving to decrease stormwater runoff. The new clubhouse will house classrooms, program spaces, and the administrative headquarters of First T of Greater Washington. A golf-based youth development organization. For operational efficiency, ease of food service, and to provide a continuous accessible route through the facility. The range structure is connected directly to the clubhouse on each level and will step down along along its length following the grade of the range line. The massing of the building draws from traditional forms, and the building features extensive use of natural materials such as stone and wood. Combined with large expanses of glass and contrasted with steel and other elements. This elevation shows the two-story driving range connecting the main clubhouse with the community building. As previously noted, the applicant is planning extensive use of natural stone, wood timber, horizontal siding, and slate shingles. But combined with large expanses of glass, steel elements, and other features. Additional details on lighting and landscaping in this area will be needed in the future. As you can see in this rendering, the building will be oriented to enhance and emphasize the panoramic views from the clubhouse to the golf course. Cited to preserve the mature trees and nestled into the topography. Aesthetically, the goal is to create a contemporary design which is compatible with the historic context of Rock Creek Park. The applicant is proposing to improve the cart paths, but also establish a one-point-two-mile ecological trail shown here in red. That loops through a multitude of areas in the northwestern portion of the site. The goal is to promote inclusive access to nature for improved health and well-being, expand the use of the property beyond golf users. And encourage cross-pollination between recreational communities. Additional details on bicycle facilities and how the trails will connect to area roadways will be needed at a future submission. As the golf course will continue to consist of turf grass, woods, and meadows, stormwater management is only required to address the areas of increased impervious surface. Such as the clubhouse and parking area. The applicant is proposing to use bio-retention and bioswales, as well as a large irrigation pond for water storage. The applicant is also proposing a more sustainable approach to course maintenance. Additional details on these approaches will be needed in the future. This concludes my presentation. I have incorporated recommendations throughout the presentation, so I will not read them, but I have kept them here for your reference. To summarize, the applicant will need to provide additional information on tree removal and replacement, the lighting approach, the approach to reducing water, fertilizer, and pesticide use. The quantity and location of bicycle facilities, parking requirements, proposed landscape palette, including the integration of native and pollinator species. And connecting the proposed trails to area streets. I'm available to answer any questions, and Brian Brian Joyner from the National Park Service is here and would like to make a few remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for being willing to consider our comments on uh this particular project. At the National Park Service, we are excited to see the rehabilitation plans for the park's golf course moving forward. The course has long been an integral part of the park, designed to fit into a landscape of farmland and rolling forested hills that characterizes area in the early nineteen hundreds. Through the years, the course and player experience has suffered as the original layout changed. Vegetation crept into the fairways and course structures deteriorated. Now, a century later, we have a chance to bring back the course to it through um our partnership with NLT. The expansive plan of a historically influential um designed golf course will be revived and expanded to meet the needs of a twenty-first century golf uh program. With a restored front nine, a layout that honors Flynn's original intent, and new facilities that include a modern clubhouse and driving range. Park visitors will have the opportunity to play golf or picnic in a pavilion, wander through a pollinator me- meadow or a nat- natural trail. Or enjoy meal with friends and family in what is arguably one of the most beautiful park settings in all of the metropolitan area. This rehabilitation provides a chance to reach a new generation of park visitors, ensures that the coach is sustainable financially and environmentally. Well into the future. We look forward to working with you and the commission as NPS and NLT complete the environmental assessment. And design for the rehabilitation and move into construction in the near future. And with that, I would like to introduce from NLT, Michael McCarron.
Alright, thanks. Thanks, Brian. Um so my name is Mike McCarren. I'm the co-founder of National Links Trust. Um thank you to everyone here. Thank you, commissioners. It's it's really a pleasure to discuss our plans with you um for Rock Creek today. Um I think I I'd like to start by giving a bit of background about National Links Trust. Um first, we're a five oh one C three nonprofit. Um our mission is to protect and promote accessible, affordable, and engaging public golf courses that positively impact local communities across the United States. And we were formed specifically for the purposes of um applying for the lease for these three golf courses in DC. Um so as we put that mission into practice in DC. Um it means provide a, your our mission means providing welcoming and inclusive facilities that run a variety of educational sports and workforce development programming. Um that's designed to expand access to um to golf and to the benefits of golf to as wide a population as possible. Um it also means ensuring these properties provide opportunities and access for non-golfers to enjoy them too. Um as Brian mentioned, we have a fifty-year lease with the National Park Service under which we're responsible for addressing. Um just an incredible amount of deferred maintenance at each of the golf courses. Um eh and our plan is to accomplish the work of addressing that deferred maintenance by undertaking full-scale renovation projects at each course. Um the first of those courses is the Rock Creek Project we're discussing today. Um that would be followed by by Langston um and then East Potomac, which has a tie-in to the to the seawall work. We were, we were all just discussing um, you know, shortly before. Um we're working through the compliance process at both Rock Creek and Langston concurrently. Obviously, we're here um right now for Rock Creek, but you know, shortly we'll be here again for Langston. Um Rock Creek is the first to get to this point and will be our first project to um to get to construction for for a few reasons. Um most importantly, as was mentioned earlier, it's by far the most underutilized of the three properties. Sees the least number of golfers and it has the most inadequate infrastructure of the three courses. And as a result of all that, it's the least financially viable of the of the courses. Um you know, uh another contributing factor is that the compliance process is just relatively more straightforward at Rock Creek. For us versus Langston, eh at Langston, we're working through um some stormwater management elements involving daylighting streams and constructing wetlands. That'll make that process just a a more complicated one to navigate. Um but we're, you know, we're equally excited about about all of these projects. Um so I I know that the details of the project were were really covered in detail in the earlier presentations. Um but I just wanna talk about the overall purpose of the project. Um from our perspective, which is to make an investment in the Rock Creek property that will see it through the next fifty years. And you know, that planning on our end is guided by the history of the golf course, which includes the the golf course designed by William Flynn, which we've touched on. Um also by a desire to create a facility that provides appropriate facilities for all types of golfers, which the current course really fails at. Um you know, by by virtue of that evolution over time and the changes to the original design and and lack of facilities. Um and and we wanna make sure that what we provide is is um. I- is good for all types of golfers, whether they're new or experienced, you know, whether they're unskilled or skilled. Um we're also guided by environmental sustainability. There's a great opportunity at Rock Creek to to do a better job of transitioning. From kind of the more um you know, built environment of the clubhouse and you know, and and golf course into the, you know, beautiful. Uh uh forests that surround the the course, and there's there's a whole uh bunch of of uh. You know, whether it's pollinator me- meadows or or other um strategies that that we're excited to implement on that level. Um and then finally, uh we're guided by uh the the opportunity to positively impact our community. Uh both by providing better facilities and increasing access to golfers, as well as ensuring that the spaces are utilized by non-golfers too. Um in order for all this to be successful, we clearly need to ensure that we end up with a sustainable financial operation. Um not just at Rock Creek, but at all three golf courses after we're done with these renovation projects. But but we've intentionally set up our organization as a nonprofit so that we can prioritize affordability and accessibility and the impacts to the communities. That, you know, that we can do um with these properties over the length of our lease. Uh given the scope of of our projects here in DC, this is the, you know, likely the first meeting with you all of many. It's really great to meet you today. We're looking forward to working together on on this project and and the other projects um as we go forward. Uh I'm available to answer any questions about the project and thanks again for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you very much. Uh I think that concludes that uh your 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 presentation. I appreciate your, all of you. Uh and at this time, I think we need to uh give commissioners a chance to 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 speak to this. Um. That's going out. Just let let me ask, just generally, does any commissioner have any comment at this point in time? Okay.
I would, I would just add, um a way to go on the first T program.
Hey, hey, good. Okay, then let's go around the the commission as we have in the past. Uh I guess we start with Mrs. Cozart this time.
Uh thanks to the staff for the uh review and preparation. Uh no, no questions for me.
Right, and uh then I guess the next would be uh. Um uh well, I'm gonna just um. Let's see, I guess our next would be Miss uh hmm there's no order here for him. I can't see it. Okay, well, let's just start with Miss Miss with White, see if she can help us out. Mr. White.
Think Commissioner McMahon would be the the next, followed by Commissioner May, if you wanted to. I think Commissioner McMahon would be the, the next, followed by Commissioner May, if you wanted to.
Okay, yeah, let's do that then. Mr. McMahon.
And thank you, good presentation from the, the staff. I appreciate that. And also from Mr. McCarren, obviously an important project in the, the history and, and future of the District of Columbia, so I'm looking forward to it moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. May.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, we're very excited to have this first course moving forward. We're also very excited about the, the, our new relationship with National Links Trust, the fact that, you know, I mean, these are folks who, who dreamed up doing what we need to do at these golf courses. And so it's, it's, I mean, I could not imagine a better circumstance than having these folks step up and, and take on this challenge and to undertake it, you know, in so far, what so far has been an excellent collaboration, and I hope it will continue that way along into the future. We've got fifty years to be together. And a lot less time than that to get things fixed up. So we're looking forward to, to moving that along very quickly. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Commissioner Argo.
I don't have any particular comments. I think this is pretty exciting. It makes me get also excited about dusting off my own golf clubs. Been, I don't even tell you where they are, but to have to have this broad, interesting, inclusive approach to golf in our community in Washington, I think, I just think is great. I'm, I'm very supportive and excited about seeing the evolution of this project.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hewitt.
I too am very excited and echo the comments of my other colleagues, but again, the first tea and like the pollinator medal too. Thank you.
Good. Commissioner Green.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the presentation and I have no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright.
I don't have any comments either. I am singularly unqualified to opine in any way because I have never played golf in my life. And I, I know what the back nine is versus the front nine, but that's about it. So I, I learned a lot reading the EDR. I'm not sure how useful the knowledge is, but I'll take it.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
A great presentation. I do think that the, the clubhouse is actually kind of one of the unsung stories here. I think it could be a great community amenity up there when it's not being used necessarily for golf purposes. It's a great expansion. But I hope for Mr. May's sake that that will not be form stone in the, in the final design, but but, but that just really kind of caught my eye in, in the presentation. So, but thanks for the work.
Yeah, no, no form stone.
Over his dead body category.
Commissioner Davis.
Thanks for the presentation. No additional comments from me.
Well, it, it goes without saying that I'm very excited about this. I've been a golfer for a long time, but I haven't played for a while. My gloves are, need to probably be dusted off too, Commissioner Argo. And this will encourage me to do that. I also like the idea of the executive three, par three hole course, because it does open up the opportunities to a lot of different players. It's a good way, it's the way to get started and get in, in, into the, into the game. I do wonder though whether or not the clubhouse, and, and I, and I, and I agree with Commissioner Cash, this could be a, a useful facility for other events when it's not golfing time or golfing. By the way, our Andrews, for example, they have a, a capacity there. They have a lot of events there that are un-golf related. And when they have a large clubhouse, which I also have used. Also, I would wonder whether or not the idea of this top golf approach with targeted driving ranges is something that might be thought of, not, not necessarily, we don't want to get that vendor in there, but the concept of having a driving range that has a targeting capacity that, that maybe, maybe add to the, the technology and the, and the interest in the course and in the golf and in the driving range. I just wondered if, as I'm going to ask the presenters, whether this, this, some of this technology has been looked at and maybe looked at for the driving range.
That's a good question, Commissioner Dixon. So we actually have already installed technology that underlies top golf out at Langston and at East Potomac, and so that will definitely be a component of what we do at Rock Creek. So it's
Well, you see, you can see that I haven't been out in the course recently. I started playing at Langston many years ago when I was a kid. And I think I played at golf courses all over the world, including St. Andrews and Turnberry and on and on. And I'm excited. I hope you get this finished in time for me to use it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Having said all that, let's move to consider a, a, a motion to go forward. Is there a motion to move, please?
I would move approval of the EDR.
And I will second.
Okay, with, with Secretary Costa, please, I'll call the roll, please, and confirm the motion.
Sure. The motion was made by Commissioner May and seconded by Commissioner Argo. And with that, Commissioner Kozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Jared Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
Right. Thank you. The motion has carried.
All right. Okay, now we can move to item seven C. Found master plan for joint base Anacostia. Bowling historical Anacostia district plan. Thank you.
Okay, can you, can you see that, Ms. Costa?
Yes, see it and we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chairman Dixon and members of the commission. The United States Air Force has submitted its final Anacostia district plan to the commission for review and comment. In addition to the Anacostia plan, which you gave us here today, I would also like to note that you recently approved the final plan for the Housing and Community Support District on today's consent calendar. This district is made up of mostly residential neighborhoods with some open and recreational space and a community support node with a base exchange and commissary. However, I will just be reviewing the Anacostia district plan today as the Air Force has mostly smaller scale improvements planned for the Housing and Community Support District at this time. Previously, our commission also approved two other district plans for JABAB, the Sentinels of the Cap- Capitol District and the Historic Bowling District. And these, in addition to today's plans, will complete a series of updated Air Force plans for the installation, which includes a larger base wide framework plan and transportation management plan. As this is a final master plan approval, we are considering how the Air Force submission reflects our previous comments on the draft district plan. And if there continue to be any unresolved issues that still need our attention as the Air Force submits future individual projects for review by the commission. As a reminder, Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, or JABAB, is situated in southeast Washington DC at the convergence of the Potomac and Anacostia Rivers and Ward Eight, ordered by the Naval Research Laboratory to the south, Frederick Douglass Memorial Bridge to the north, South Capitol Street and I two ninety five to the east, and the Potomac and Anacostia Rivers along its west side. JABAB is located approximately one and a half miles to the southeast of the US Capitol Building and at the base of the Washington Topographic Bowl, just to the west of the Department of Homeland Security's St. Elizabeth Campus. JABAB has a total population of approximately seventeen thousand military and civilian employees, hosting units that include the National Guard, Military Reserve, United States Coast Guard, and other federal personnel. Similar to a small city, the nine hundred and sixty six acre installation has a wide range of land uses with privatized homes and a mix of other uses that includes parks and open space, commercial uses, communications and air facilities, military barracks, child development centers, and administrative buildings. And here are some notable campus landmarks that include the JABAB Marina, Blanchard Barracks, the JABAB Base Exchange and Commissary, Air Force Honor Guard Campus, and the DIA Building. And one other prominent feature is the raised earthen levee seawall along JABAB's shoreline. Originally completed in nineteen thirty nine, the raised levee offers panoramic views to downtown Washington DC, East Potomac Park, and Reagan National Airport. The Anacostia Planning District encompasses the northernmost portion of the installation with primary land uses that include mission, administration, and industrial uses. In addition, there are several pockets of community support, bachelor housing, and green and recreational space in the district's northern tip, which is currently under control of the Navy. The Anacostia District's development pattern reflects its previous operation by the military as an early naval airfield with industrial and service oriented uses. The district area was formerly known as Support Facility Anacostia until its merger with Bowling Air Force Base in twenty ten to form the current Joint Base Anacostia Bowling Installation. The historic core of the district, formerly known as the Naval Air Station Anacostia Historic District, is shown here in yellow, encompassing multiple historically significant buildings, some of which are unused in poor condition and experiencing subsidence based on existing soil conditions. Here we see the Anacostia District superimposed over JABAB's twenty eight mile internal roadway system, which is made up of primary, secondary, and local roadways. And you will note that installation's primary north-south spine road, represented here as the thicker blue line, is named Chappy James Boulevard in the south and Defense Boulevard in the north. And the roadway accesses each of JABAB's planning districts as well as each of its three operational gates, South Gate, Arnold Gate, and First Sterling Gate in the north. About half of JABAB's land area is currently susceptible to one hundred and five hundred year flood events, with virtually all of the Anacostia District encompassing lower lying flood prone areas as shown here on the slide. Here's some notable area locations in the district, including the Navy controlled open and recreational space to the north, JABAB's First Sterling Gate, the Raised Levee and its waterfront trail, and the Historic Air Station District with several buildings. The Air Force has a number of planning objectives for the district, which include enabling mission partners and unique missions, enhancing base security, adapting to climate change, and providing complete multimodal transportation networks. Building on these, the district framework plan translates these objectives into future planning actions within the context of the district's activity nodes, landmarks, paths and connections, and future planning opportunities. And then these ultimately become future projects as depicted here in this illustrative plan for the district, including a new access control point, screening area and transit hub, a more cohesive Navy ceremonial guard campus, the JABAB Levy Improvement Project, and several other proposed warehousing and service building expansions. Our commission previously provided the Air Force with a number of comments during its review of the draft Anacostia District Plan. And I will now summarize how the Air Force responds through its final plan submission over the next few slides. In general, staff is satisfied with the final Air Force's master plan submission. And so we are recommending commission approval of the final plan at today's meeting, as stated in the final executive director's recommendation before you. Our draft master plan comments included a recommendation, which is shown here on this slide, for the Air Force to comply with Federal Executive Order one three six nine zero to improve JABAB's resilience against future flooding. And this would be in addition to the JABAB plan to improve its riverfront levy. In response, the Air Force has revised the district, district plan to clarify that future development would meet the requirements of this executive order. In response to our request for future consultation relating to the new First Sterling Access Control Point project, we note the Air Force has already met with the DOT and NCPC staff to solicit early feedback. And JABAB will continue to meet with our staff periodically as they initiate, as they initiate a future environmental assessment study and continue to develop the access point design. The Air Force has indicated that they will consult with NCPC and DC Spoh staff early in their design process for the new Navy ceremonial guard campus redevelopment, responding to our previous review recommendation. And as an aside, I would also like to note that since our draft Anacostia Plan ru- review from this past September, the Air Force has elected to preserve an additional air station historic district building identified here as Building Ninety One, with a plan to convert its space into an indoor recreational facility as part of the future Navy ceremonial guard campus project design. However, we did include a recommendation in the final approval action to emphasize NCPC's desire for early consultation related to all planned projects both in and around the Historic Air Station District to help mitigate any potential adverse effects to the air station's historic features there. Responding to our previous requests, the Air Force will brief us on their renewable energy program for JABAB once they complete their installation wide energy plan. And the presentation will provide our, our commission with a look at their solar array sighting process, future installation specific energy goals, and the status of their current power purchase agreement. While the Air Force is unable to plan for a new pedestrian and bicycle gate at the northernmost tip of JABAB, as the land will continue to remain under Navy control, the new First Sterling Access Control Point Facility would not only accommodate an east-west route between the riverfront and South Capitol Street, which is in the spirit of our previous recommendation, but the project would strengthen the travel range for pedestrians and bicyclists with a formalized transit hub for DoD shuttles, Womata buses, and public drop off traffic, thereby improving JABAB's connectivity into downtown Washington DC and the surrounding areas. Over the next few months, the Air Force will submit their latest TMP data for staff review, which will help us track the performance of JABAB's travel demand management programs as they work to reduce installation wide employee parking demand. And before I conclude, I would like to comment on future installation wide employee parking. The Air Force has committed to a long term one to three goal, and they, and they do support planned transportation services such as high capacity transit to downtown Washington and commuter ferry and water taxi service, which is expressed through their TMP. The installation has recently improved its overall parking ratio, and JABAB will continue to improve through limited future capacity increases. While this approach would continue to gradually improve JABAB's overall ratio, the Air Force must further limit parking to reach its overall one to three goal by twenty forty one. In addition to JABAB's continued employment population growth over the next twenty years, the Air Force will need to design some of their planned new projects with minimal or no additional parking capacity, or else parking can be removed elsewhere on the installation as an offset for new parking needed to support a new development site such as the National Capital Region Center of Excellence. Thus, NCPC will consider further requests for new parking on a project by project basis. And for each case, we will need to understand the overall installation wide ratio at the time of submission, how each project fits into JABAB's overall plan to meet its long term one to three goal, as well as employee travel and mission requirements, and the availability of public transit, carpool, van pool, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure to each future project site. And we include all of these points in the final executive director's recommendation that is before you here today. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I would like to note that we have a, a number of representatives here from JABAB who are available for questions by the commission, including Colonel Zeitler, who is the eleventh wing vice commander, Kat Keller-Crassor, who is the deputy base engineer, and Mark Berger, who is the planning director at JAB. Thank you very much, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. That's just fine. At this time, I'd like to openly ask whether the commissioners have any particular questions at this time, and then we will go into a round robin again to get everybody comment. So, open it up now, or I will go in a round robin. Any, any comments? Okay, let's go to Commissioner Argo first, and see what she might, as Commander Argo, I should say, appropriately so.
As he, yes. I do love that title. Um, the honorary commander.
Honorary commander.
Yes, of the.
Honorary commander. This is, this is a retired Colonel Dixon speaking to you, honorary commander.
I love it. Um, I'm excited about this. I actually visited the base over the holidays for, as an honorary commander for a holiday party and was able to, in fact, they gave a presentation, was also able to talk to some of the people about some of the issues that we've touched on here today. I, I don't have anything in particular to comment on, other than, obviously, a lot of the focus has been on, and anybody goes down there, you can see it, on the need to to, to, to get a really tight TMP plan. There's a lot of cars out there. And they've, and on land that could be used for, for better purposes, I think, for everybody and for the environment. But they're great people out there, and I think are very committed to, to, from what I can tell in my conversations with them, to make some of the changes and improvements to, that we've suggested as we've reviewed the plans for this nearly thousand-acre installation. So, appreciate it. Thanks for the, the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes, thank you so much. Just really, really good plan, focuses on the transportation management plan, which is also, I'm pleased with the installation energy plan, and particularly the use of solar panels, and also the Chappy James Street. That's very nice. And there, and very important to emphasize the Tuskegee Army. Got so many, thank you.
Mr. Green?
Thank you. No, I appreciate the presentation. Enjoy the report. My only comment would be I'd like to see as this moves from, from a master plan into implementation to look for ways to minimize the demolition of historic resources within the historic district. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wright?
I'm not gonna say anything more. I feel like we've seen this a hundred times. And I've commented along the way, so, you know, I, but mostly, I, I kind of, I'm, I'm I'm, I agree with Mr. Green. Their heart, again, and I've said this before, there are opportunities to fix some mistakes that've been, have been made, and I'm glad to see that they're gonna do that. Please don't make any more.
Well, Commissioner Wright, I have to tell you this. Your two cats have backstage you.
Oh.
Your two cats have backstage you.
Oh, wow.
But you only had a black and white, now you got a very black and a very white tail. Beautiful cats.
I got four of them. That's.
Oh, my God, well.
I'm in crazy cat lady territory.
Well, I've been there, so I understand how four cats can be one time. Take care. Bye-bye. And now, we'll move on then to Commissioner Cash.
Uh, thanks so much. I do wanna just point out, I think it's great, the, the bike lanes, looking at the pedestrian accessibility, and those additions. I would just, as you're looking at the TMP, I think I've made this comment before, but seeing if there's ways to utilize DC Capital Bike Share, just to get more people moving around like that. And then looking at the slides with the, the cross-section of the bike lanes, I do just wanna say, I hope that we don't just slap a couple of bike lanes down. I hope that you are, are being thoughtful about pervious surfaces. And then I've started looking at the Google Maps again. Maybe you can put this into the plans, but some trees along those, those routes would be great. If you wanna get people walking and biking, it's kind of a barren wasteland out there when it comes to vegetation and foliage, so. Just keeping those things in mind, because the bike lanes by themselves and the sidewalks by themselves won't get the circulation. You need those other amenities, so. But I think that, that there's been some good work done. So, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. No additional comments.
Okay, Commissioner Kozar?
Uh, thanks to the staff for the analysis and the presentation. I noted with pleasure that there's plans for reuse of Building Ninety-One that we have talked about before, and appreciate the staff note about early Section One-O-Six consultation.
Commissioner May?
Yeah, well, I agree with the comments already made by the commission. In particular, Commissioner Cash's comments about bike infrastructure and trees. I do wanna highlight one odd thing that I saw in the EDR. And I think we should consider making a small modification to the EDR. And that is that there's a comment that says that the, the commission finds that while this approach, this is referring to the parking, the, the three to, the one-to-three parking goals. Well, finds that while the, this approach will slowly improve the overall JAB ratio over time, the installation is unlikely to reach its one-to-three goal by twenty forty-one. I don't think that we should say that. I, you know, I understand that might be a certain reality that the staff has come to conclude. But as a commission, I think that if we, you know, if we include this in the report, we are signaling in advance that we're not really expecting them to meet that goal. And I don't think that we should do that. I think we should simply strike that finding from the EDR.
Are you gonna make a motion to that, Peter? Because I think you're right.
I will make a motion that we strike the, the finding that, that states, the commission finds that while this approach will slowly improve the overall JAB ratio over time, the installation is unlikely to reach its one-to-three goal by twenty forty-one.
Okay, is anybody second that?
Yeah, I will second that.
Okay, and with, with, without objection, I don't hear any objection, it will be accepted as an amendment to the final vote that we take. So, I'm procedurally correct, I believe. Uh, Peter, did you have any more you wanted to say?
No, that's, uh, no, that's it. I think, you know, otherwise, you know, it's, like, I feel like Commissioner Wright, I feel like I've seen it a hundred times. And, and I don't want them to make any more mistakes. So, you know, more trees, more bike infrastructure. You know, make use of what you got. It's a terrific opportunity to make it into a very special place in addition to having of all, all of its important functions.
I agree with you. Uh, I would also, we're gonna move, play a, a motion to, to go forward. I think we also have had a lot of cooperation from the folks there and our concerns in the past, and they've worked with us closely. I also have to say, from a historical perspective, I, I remember this base when it used to have planes landing on it. I predate anybody in the commission on that one. And, and therefore, you understand, the, the absence of trees is, goes along with planes landing. They don't want a lot of trees around, but it does need to be, I think, directed now for its current use, and I, I, I would agree. I also wanna me- me- mention that the parking issue is also a little delicate, because a lot of folks like me, I'm retired Army Colonel, and I use the base for, as a, as a military retiree, a lot for, you know, different things. And there's a lot of commuting coming in, and I think there's gonna be more, given the presence of so much federal at the, at the, on St. Elizabeth's Coast Guard's there, et cetera, et cetera. So, people will be using this base for a lot of stuff, so there is gonna be some more cars maybe that are not accommodated by, or, or required for, for employees. So, I don't know. We have to look at that and see where it goes, but I do support Peter's position. And with that, I'm happy to, to, to see this go forward and look for a motion at this time.
With the, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll go ahead on. I moved that we accept the EDR with the amendment proposed by Commissioner May.
Very good. Very good. So, the motion is to move as amended, and I would ask the secretary to, to check on, verify the, the, the the vote and to also confirm the not, the, 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 the adoption.
That, Commissioner McMahon moved the EDR as amended, and that was seconded by Commissioner Hewlett. So, with that, Commissioner Kozar?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Chair Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Epstein. Thank you. The motion has carried.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am secretary. All right, with that, we move to our last item. And that is the Southeast Federal Center.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can, Miss Reese.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. The General Services Administration has submitted a third amendment to the Southeast Federal Center Master Plan for Review. The Southeast Federal Center, or SEFC, also known as the Yards, is in southeast Washington along the Anacostia River. The Southeast Federal Center Public Private Development Act of two thousand was established by Public Law one-oh-six dash four-zero-seven, which established, or which authorized GSA to enter into agreements with a private entity for the redevelopment of the SEFC. In two thousand and four, GSA selected Brookfield Properties, formerly known as, formerly known as Forest City, as the master developer for the redevelopment of the SEFC pursuant to the approved master plan. NCPC is tasked by Public Law one-oh-six dash four-zero-seven to ensure that redevelopment of the SEFC is consistent with the objectives of NCPC's nineteen ninety-seven Vision Plan entitled Extending the Legacy: Planning for America's Capital in the Twenty-First Century. Building from the framework of the seventeen ninety-one L'Enfant Plan and nineteen oh-one Macmillan Plan, the Legacy Plan is the third chapter in the district's planning history. It departs from previous plans that concentrated facilities and investments around the National Mall by shifting the city's perceived center to the US Capitol and directing federal development outward to all city quadrants. The Legacy Plan envisioned a redeveloped SEFC with an active and publicly accessible waterfront park. Also, per a two thousand and five memorandum of understanding between NCPC and GSA, NCPC reviews for comment and advice the thirty-five percent exterior building design drawings at the SEFC for conformity with, conformity with the urban design guidelines and minimum phase performance standards, which are outlined in the MOU. These guidelines include the preservation of views and vistas to and from the waterfront, as well as to federal monumental buildings. High-density residential and mixed use is also encouraged, and plazas and open space destinations are an integral part of the site. The guidelines recommend an appropriate mix of neighborhood and waterfront-oriented retail, service, and cultural uses located at, at the ground level, along major streets and buildings that face onto the waterfront park. The original master plan was approved in two thousand and four. An update to the master plan was then approved in two thousand and seven, and two subsequent amendments in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty were approved to reflect development that had occurred and minor changes for future development, including flexibility in land uses. NCPC has also reviewed the thirty-five percent design drawings for several of the projects and the SEFC pursuant to the two thousand and five MOU, since the plan's adoption. As a reminder, the SEFC is a forty-two acre site in southeast. At full build-out, the SEFC is anticipated to contain approximately five-point-five million square feet of development. Since two thousand and seven, GSA and Brookfield Properties have consulted on three historic rehabilitation projects and multiple new buildings with the District of Columbia State Historic Preservation Office, the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, and the Section One-O-Six Consulting Parties. Since the adoption of the SEFC master plan, several projects have been completed, including the Yards Park along the Anacostia River and the majority of anticipated developments surrounding the park. Currently, parcels H and I and the western portion of the planned area are under construction. The purpose of the proposed amendment is to add residential use to the existing office land use for the A parcels, which are bound by First Street to the west, M Street to the north, New Jersey Avenue to the east, and Quander Street to the south. The parcels are currently undeveloped, and the amendment will allow some flexibility in their use. There will be no change to the building footprints, heights, or massing, and flexibility for residential and or office uses above ground floor retail. On the A parcel, this is not inconsistent with the goals and objectives of NCPC's Legacy Plan. Staff notes that the proposed amendment also includes minor modifications to land use phasing and parking plans to reflect this amendment and bring these figures into alignment with as-built conditions. The parking plan is updated to reflect actual parking for completed projects and the planned parking program for future development parcels. It also adjusted the previously designed three levels of low-grade parking with the, with the H parcel to two levels, which was included in the commission's thirty-five percent design review of the H parcel development. The square footage chart in the phasing plan is also updated to reflect the revised totals in each phase, which are consistent with as-built conditions. And overall, staff recommends approval of the third amendment to the revised master plan for the Southeast Federal Center. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions along with Shelley Jones and Brett Banks from the General Services Administration, and Toby Millman from Brookfield Properties, who are also available for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm gonna move to, I guess, we have one person to speak. Patricia Haney would like to be, speak. She's one of our witnesses. Is she with us?
Yes, hello.
Okay, and you have, I think, with three minutes?
Uh, she has five minutes, as she's representing the organization.
Oh, yes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Patricia Haney, and I'm a researcher with Unite Here Local Twenty-Five. Our union represents about sixty-five hundred hospitality workers in the region, many of whom are hotel and restaurant workers here in DC. NCPC's Legacy Plan states that jobs, transportation, and housing are among Washington's most urgent social and economic problems, and if the Legacy Plan is more than a technical exercise, it must help the city solve them. Our union agrees with this sentiment, and as DC's economy recovers from the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we believe it is vital that any new development creates good jobs and affordable housing that allow hospitality and service workers to not only survive but thrive in DC's economy. The ongoing development of the Yards at the Southeast Federal Center site has the potential to bring a diversity of new jobs to the district, including the potential for new hospitality and service industry jobs. It is critical that these jobs are good jobs, so that workers can afford to live, work, and play within their communities, a sentiment that is not currently a reality for many working people in DC. The National Low Income Housing Coalition's twenty-twenty-one annual report shares that the hourly wage necessary to afford a two-bedroom apartment in Washington DC is thirty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. However, the median hourly wage for hospitality and service workers falls far below that in the region. Housekeepers in the area make a median hourly wage of fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents, and food service workers make fourteen dollars and fifty cents. DC workers need commitments to bring good hospitality and other service industry jobs to our community. Along with jobs, this development has the potential to deliver additional dwelling units with the third amendment to the Southeast Federal Center Revised Master Plan. And NCPC's Legacy Plan states further that Washington must work for its residents and for the people who do business here. It must be clean, safe, attractive, and affordable. As Washington becomes less affordable for working people, we hope that affordable housing is a priority for any future residential uses at this site. While we are not opposing the third amendment to the master plan before you today, our union believes it is critical to consider our union believes it is critical to consider the conditions for future workers and housing affordability at every stage of the development process. In NCPC's Equity Action Plan, the commission acknowledges that agency outreach does not regularly reach and engage underserved communities. As a union of women, immigrants, people of color, and those who are regularly disenfranchised, we hope our comments today urge NCPC, the General Services Administration, and Brookfield Properties to prioritize the creation of good jobs and affordable housing in this next phase of the development and all future phases. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. I wish that you were around when I was doing later's work when we want. There was no union available to protect us a lot of years ago, but thank you for your input. Thank you. With that, I'll be, this time we'll move to commissioners to get their comments. I'm going to start with, let's see, I think I start with Commissioner Wright.
Yes, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Toby Millman to, to answer some, or to respond to Ms. Haney's testimony. Because, well, it's complicated, but, but a lot of the issues that she raises are, are, despite the citations, which are all accurate, in the Legacy Plan, all this is, the amendment provides, it should open the door for, for all kinds of good things, because it won't, because it won't be yet another office building. But I will defer to Mr. Millman. He is the Senior Vice President at Brookfield. Toby, would you like to address some of her comments?
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner Wright. Yeah, my name is Toby Millman. I'm Senior Vice President Development for Brookfield Properties. Definitely appreciate Ms. Haney's comments and frankly, completely agree with the goal to provide dedicated affordable housing in the Yards and frankly, throughout the district. Brookfield has been very supportive of affordable housing initiatives consistently across the region. As many of you may be aware, all of the multifamily apartments that have been delivered in the Yards have provided 20% of their units as affordable at 50% AMI. This has resulted in delivering over 300 units of affordable housing to date in the Yards. Almost three-quarters of all the affordable housing delivered in the entire Capitol Riverfront neighborhood. So, we're kind of batting way above our weight for even our neighbors there. Even without the A parcels, which are the subject of the amendment today, we are on track to deliver about 450 dedicated affordable housing units at full buildout of the Yards. The amendment that's before you today would provide the opportunity to deliver even more housing, which would in itself help address affordability by adding new housing supply, but would also be subject to the same affordability requirements as the rest of the Yards. So, that's affordable housing. I think that we're in a good, frankly, in a good place with that. And again, doing better than most of our, even our peers in the Yards. As it relates to jobs, proud to say we have been meeting or exceeding our CBE and first source employment requirements for construction jobs. And since the inception of the project, Forest City put in place what is, you know, widely recognized as a, as a really strong workforce development program that we have carried forward. It's been really successful in matching local and disadvantaged residents with permanent jobs, and not just construction jobs, but jobs that continue on in the neighborhood going forward. Of course, the details of all these development plans will continue to be the subject of individual development applications that will be reviewed by NCPC and other, any other consulting parties, as well as the DC Zoning Commission. So, we appreciate the consideration of the amendment by the commission today.
Very good. Mr. Wright, you still have the floor if you want it.
I yield the floor.
Yield the floor. Okay. All right, then we'll move to Commissioner Cash.
Sorry about that. No questions or comments. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
I also have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Cozart?
Thanks to the staff for their presentation. No questions or comments.
Commissioner McMahon?
Hi, sir. No questions or comments for me. Thanks.
All right. And Commissioner May?
No questions, no comments, and no cats in the background.
Okay, well, next time, maybe. Yeah, I know we can bar at least one, maybe. Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Argo? Commissioner Argo there?
I'm, I'm here with a muted mic. Sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, I don't have any, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hewitt?
I agree. No comments or questions. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Green?
I appreciated the presentation, and I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, that will probably look for a motion to move forward, but I want to comment that I think people do understand and appreciate the relationship between affordable housing and having employees near their work. A community that is diverse in levels of income is also diverse in opportunities. So, I'm glad to hear that, that this project has taken that in consideration, and we hope to have more affordable housing available, which is very important. As I said, so employees can be near where they work and be good, better employees in many ways. With that, I look for a motion to go forward, please.
Well, I move approval then.
All right.
The recommendation.
All right. Very good. Okay, with that, I'll ask the secretary to please confirm the motion and give us a vote, please.
Thank you. I will say I missed the second on that. Was there a second?
There wasn't.
I second it. Or I guess a few of us did.
Duke, duking it out, but the motion is made by Commissioner Hewlett and the second by Commissioner Argo. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Chair Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davis?
Epstein.
Thank you. The motion has carried.
Very good. And with that, the, we, this concludes our opening session, agree, agenda, and also concludes my first meeting to chair. Thank you, staff, for so much help, particularly you, Madam Secretary and others, and for the cooperation of the, my fellow commissioners in putting me here and working with me through this first meeting that I had to do myself, that is. Thank you all much. Our next meeting, commission meeting, will be Thursday, February the 2nd, 2003, at 1 o'clock AM, I mean, 8 PM. They make their own ones. All right. Thank you. You all be good. Bye for now.